Good morning, everyone, and welcome to City Council's study session. We have a lot going on, but I'd like to start off by thanking you all for joining us on this session around language access and the multilingual workforce efforts of the city. So kicking it off today, I'll be introducing Natalia Ruiz-Rubio, who was online from E W U. We'll come back to you in just a minute. But I'll just do a quick introduction of who's around the table once she works with Jacoby on that. I'll just say Natalia's team reached out to us after we passed our recent ordinance focused on building a multilingual workforce for the city. And that ordinance committed to implementation strategies to seek out bilingual and multilingual candidates through direct partnerships with local organizations. So with that, we will just do a quick round of introductions of who's in the room. Again, welcome. I'm Council President Betsy Wilpersen. To my left is?
Councilmember Lambden. Hi, everyone.
And councilmembers on the screens. Jacoby?
Councilmember Klitsky is online.
Welcome, Councilmember Klitsky, online. Hi there. And the other two people at this table sitting with me, just do a quick introduction because I know you'll be presenting later.
Allison Adam. I'm the Director of Human Resources for the City of Spokane.
Yeah, thank you.
Kelsey Pearson. I'm the Chief Examiner for the Civil Service Commissioner for the City of Spokane.
Great. We'll start down there.
I'm Anna Frost. I'm the Senior Grant Writer and Proposal Developer at Eastern Washington University.
And I'm Ashley Stettler. I'm the Business Manager for Professional and Continuing Education at Eastern Washington University.
Thank you all. Thank you again for being here to discuss how we can help implement this that started this conversation way back a little bit before COVID hit. But COVID was really the impetus for us doubling down because we saw all of our non-English-speaking nonprofits and businesses, the challenges they were having. And the city was not in a place to help meet their needs going forward. Also, just Councilmember Kat Card just walked in. I'll let him do a little introduction here. Councilmember Kat Card?
Yeah, Mike Katcard, City Council District One.
Great. And now we're going to kick it over to Professor Natalia online. And there's someone else online, Jacoby, as well.
Yeah, we have Kristi Harder also.
All right, Kristi, welcome as well. You want to introduce yourself, Kristi?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
I thank you for having us. I have to show my shirt. I was a Peace Corps volunteer in Ghana, West Africa, right after undergrad. So I'm absolutely thrilled that we are partnering with you to work on supporting our refugee and immigrant populations. Thank you for doing this.
Welcome. And the other person that's on Zoom?
That's Professor Natalia.
And that's Professor Natalia. Welcome.
Hi. I apologize for joining late.
No.
The link was not working. My worst nightmare. Okay, so thanks for having us and thanks for all my colleagues, Anna, Christy, and Asli, who is in the room, for joining. They are part of this collaboration. And we are here, I think I saw a presentation. I don't know if you are able to see that presentation.
Yes.
There. Okay, so I'll ask past next slide. We are here to get to, our goal is to see how we can increase the workforce, bilingual, multilingual workforce for the City of Spokane and discuss an action plan in collaboration with the City of Spokane and Eastern Washington University. And I missed the introduction, but for why this matter, I'm sure that the City Council knows because they have voted on the resolution increasing the multilingual workforce. But this matter because our city and our county is becoming more linguistically diverse. And this open economic opportunities because bilingual employees improve business reach and also customer service. But also is a possibility to enhance communication and that translated into community well-being. And if you can pass the next slide. And I'm going to make a brief introduction of things that we can help from Eastern. We are good at, we already doing, and we'll have time for questions for everyone. So if you could pass, oh, yeah. So there are benefits to the city, obviously, as a mentor. But there's economic improvement, public service, and community trust. But their starting point, and you can pass the next slide. It is, and these are questions that I have when I was thinking about possible training and possible best practices because these are information that I don't have, but maybe the city might have already done through different work. And I know they have created an interdepartmental group. So where are the departments with more needs? Where are the bilingual workforce needed? And where are the needs for each department? Because it might differ, like maybe police officers have different needs that that other staff working translating documents in different offices. And where are the training opportunities already in place? So we don't kind of replicate things already offered. And also, what is the recruitment process? Because that is also going to inform the type of training that we need. And if you pass the next slide, these are things that we can offer, that Eastern can offer. Obviously, degrees and courses, those are more your traditional opportunities. But language proficiency assessment, cultural competency workshops, and translation and interpretation trainings, and also bilingual internship to recruit students interested in civic service and government. And if you can pass to the next, so obviously, we have a wide range of degrees and courses. Your Spanish, German, French, Japanese, bilingual education. We are offering Spanish for professions, healthcare providers, social work, criminal justice, and business. And if you pass to the next slide. In terms of language proficiency assessment, we have extensive experience in language proficiency assessment because we have the infrastructure. We have been designated testing sites in 2012. And we provide testing to our students either for their language requirement, but also for students who need to be certified as teachers for the state of Washington. And also for teachers that need to be certified to move to bilingual or dual programs. So we administer tests in languages, obviously, the most common, Spanish, Arabic, Russian. But we have Tagalog, Vietnamese, Chinese, Amharic, and sometimes language that I have to go look at it to see if we can do some testing. If you pass to the next slide. When we talk about proficiency assessment, language assessment, we have to think of what is proficiency. Normally, the question that we ask is, how many languages do you speak? Okay, I speak several languages. I can speak English, probably. That's my, after Spanish, my highest proficiency language. I'm here presenting. I'm sure I'm making some mistake, but I can communicate. And I'm also a little nervous, so I can make mistakes, more mistake when I'm nervous. But if you ask me, where's my proficiency in Greek? I will kind of tell you that I'm a survivor. I will not be able to be presenting like I'm presenting in English. So proficiency refers to the ability to use the language appropriate with accuracy in different contexts and situations. And if you move to the next slide, you have a really range. We have a framework already that is created by the American Council for Foreign Languages. But this framework was created by the US government in 1955 when they realized that they needed a tool to assess the proficiency of different staff and workers. And is used by different agencies from NATO to the Valentine Police Department. If you move to the next, the next slide, you can see that the, your proficiency might be from where we consider a pirate, you can do very few things. To intermediate, you can be a survivor and do everyday tasks. And then advanced, advanced is what is considered the working professional proficiency. However, it depends on, this practice saying that each department will assess what they are, what they need. Because if someone is going to be just using oral communication, interpreting, they might not be writing a lot. And we have a lot of speakers which oral proficiency is very high because they speak it at home. But their written proficiency might be lower because they have not done any schooling in that language. And they know how to write, but they might not be able to be translating documents with accuracy because they are not, they don't have that proficiency. So it is important to know that distinction between to know, to know a language and to know the language in which contest is going to be used. If you move to the next slide. We offer, and I'm not going into the technical, this is, this is a lot of details. But we already test at Eastern and we, that have the infrastructure. We have the, the computers, the softwares, anything to test over 100 languages. Obviously, I imagine that the city is interested in testing for the most common languages spoken in the city that are the most needed. But with this two test, actual test and stamp test, we can cover a wide range of, it depends what are the needs of the city. So I will not go into details. I provide this, this presentation with all the details and all the links to, to an overview of the testing. If you can move to the next, to, there are more information about the different options that we have. This is very wide used by all agencies. And it has, it provide a full proficiency range from novice to superior. And it is a little bit more expensive, but it provide more oral proficiency in more languages. So if you pass to the next one, this is a different one, but I'm not going to go into details. It's just pretty much the options that there is there already in place. And we already do testing in this, with this to test. And if you pass to the next one, we have talked that beside using a language is important to provide cultural competency workshop and to train. Why? Because we not only need to know the language, but we need to be self-aware of how cultural identity, how our cultural education, how our practices, cultural practices, inform our interaction with people from other cultures. And that impact our interaction with them. So best practices in term of, of workshops, they, they recommend that our training are intentional instead of informational, instead of having 200 people in one room that kind of don't, do not apply what they are learning. They recommend 15 to 20 participants per workshop, a length between two to four hours just depend on what, what the institution wants. And because that provide opportunities for self-awareness and kind of hands-on activities that participant can apply when they go back to their office, to their desk, to their job, to the everyday interaction with your neighbors. Because that is, you never, once you learn about it, you cannot just disconnect it from, from your practices. If you pass the next slide, the translation interpretation training, the recommendation is that they are tailored to each department and their needs. Because ideally, this, this training provide opportunities to work with the everyday task that they have to do, either interpreting or translating, and see what are the needs for more training or where are the strengths and weaknesses that every one of us have when we do translation or interpreting. And if you move to the next slide, these are some of, some of the things that we work in, some of the training. I work with my students when we do especially healthcare training. That's what I do for healthcare providers. It's linguistic and cultural competence, but also a translation skill. Sometimes we can use, we have to be very careful when using AI and translation, machine translation tools because they can be problematic. So they recommend a hybrid approach, that you know the tools that you can use for translating, but then you, you also apply strategies to edit and review and proofread what you have translated with the use of a machine. It speed up the translation process, but also ensure accuracy and cultural, cultural competency. So we don't put, there are, sometimes I go out there and see some translation and they hurt my eyes and my brain when I see those. And they, they, they cause confusion because you don't really understand what they want to convey in the language that you speak. So interpreting skills, the same, there are different ways of interpreting. So knowing which one do you need, in which, in which department or in which context you are going to apply is important. And you have there some of the information that you can review at your own pace. And then if you move to the next slide. Important, obviously, the opportunities for professional development. Knowing a language doesn't mean that we know how to use it in translation, how to translate, and how to interpret. It requires training. I mean, if you go and see the requirements and the certification requirements for becoming a healthcare interpreter, it is, it is long. And it also, we recommend that the city offers ongoing training refreshers because there are opportunities out there online, and some of them are free. But at least identify those. And recognition for those bilingual service excellence for the, for the workers that enroll in those programs. And obviously, funding is going to be key to provide opportunities to expand the workforce, the multicultural and multilingual workforce. And if you move to the next. So funding a multilingual workforce program, well, the estimate program cost depend on the selected model. Number of participants, length, and frequency, that is up to the council and the city to decide if they want to start with pile, with a pilot program addressing the needs of certain departments or across the board in all departments. And launch training within high needs department lists. Provide proficiency assessment for participants and provide cultural competency workshop and translation interpreting training. So finally, the last slide. Well, there are ways to, to, to measure success. But these are some opportunities, some ideas, best practices, not only the number of bilingual, but maybe service that look at satisfaction in each program or customer that engage with those departments. And then the next slide is a call for action. Language is more than words, it's about connection. And I think this program will provide connection across different, different areas in the city. So approving a funding for bilingual workforce, establishing an interdepartmental working group, which I think is already in place, and start providing language proficiency assessment and training opportunities. So that's all for, I have, and if we have time, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from councilmembers or comments? I just have a quick one about the bilingual internships. Yes. Just how does that program work and how do we connect? Since internships are, are important to council, I'm sure they are to the administration. So what does that look like and where would we start?
Okay, so you can tell us where are the needs, identify where, what do you want? If you have any specific needs, or you say, we want different students that come as interns and we can recruit them at Eastern. We already have students in many language. If you want a specific language to Turk, a lot of these students are already bilingual students. They already, they can, they can take a proficiency test if necessary. And, and so we can help with the recruitment. Now, we, what we need to have is that where are the needs? If there are any requirements that the city wants in term of how we recruit those students and someone who is going to be the supervisor of those students when they are placed in the city.
Right. Thanks. Any council questions? Councilmember Lambden?
So I have a question just related to data, and this might be something that's outside of your department, but curious if Eastern has any data that you all are tracking just around trends of specific languages? Because I think in terms of language access, one thing that I see is that a lot of the work is very reactive because we learn of communities that are coming to Spokane and are not accessing the services in the way that they should because of language barriers. So if there is any data that's currently being tracked just in growth in specific populations year over year, that would also be really helpful to see if Eastern does have something like that.
Well, we have, the data we have is the data that is provided by the state. OSPI provide that data in term of, of the number of students that speak another language at home. And some, sometimes, although now it's harder to track, sometimes the, the English proficiency of their parents at home because it helps the schools. So we have that. In term of, in term of the data, what kind of data? Are we talking about students that speak the line, another language that come to Eastern? Are we talking about students that are being placed? There is a high demand of the bilingual workers. And for example, we have the state pass, they pass a bill funding the expansion of the dual programs because they wanted by 2040 have all Washington students have access to a dual program. Meaning that they will do the schooling in two languages.
Right. Yeah, I think I was more curious along the lines of like community-wide data. I know there's been some projects that have been done by students in the past looking at population trends over time. So if there is anything like that that existed?
I'm not aware of that data. I can look it at if there is there and get it, try to get it back to you right now at the top of my mind. No, but we have, we, we see an increase, increase, well, a lot of our students in the state of Washington finish, finish their high school, what we call the syllable literacy that are, that are prove that they are speakers at an intermediate level. And so that could also help to create a more diverse workforce in the future. But I don't, I'm not aware of that data.
Thank you.
Any other council questions? I have one on your cultural competency workshops. Now, are those just done on the campus? Or can you bring those into the community for various organizations or businesses?
We can, we can do it. I mean, Kristi is here and can talk more about that part. I am, I am the, I am the one who, who work on the ideas part of the training. Can work apart. That's why I have her here.
All right, Kristi, I can put it up.
I'm, yes, absolutely. We are able to customize to what your needs are in terms of location and timeframe. We do have the Catalyst Building, an example of what we've done in partnership with MultiCare is they are wanting leadership training for their new leaders that are coming off the floor as nurses. And they wanted to remove them from site so they could really focus specifically on the leadership training. So we're hosting that at the Catalyst Building. So that would be an example too, if you needed a location for the training and wanted to be offsite, we could absolutely provide that there and/or on the training campus if that's interesting. You'll have to forgive me. I'm at the airport taking off here on a flight in an hour. I also, if you don't mind, would love to address the comment about data collection with our refugee and immigrant populations. I've been meeting with our multiple, we have close to 10 different organizations in the Spokane area that are supporting our refugee and immigrant population. And they have loads of data that they've collected on, you know, as far as like what their previous education and certification of home country origins are, what jobs that they are taking here in our community, what their healthcare needs are. One of the interesting things that I've learned from that group is the struggle that our immigrants and refugees have with our healthcare system because it's so different than what they know. So we could absolutely collaborate with them to get the data that you are asking for or are interested in.
Thank you. I'm going to give Anna the opportunity. She says she's a grant writer. Just tell us a little bit about how that's working in your role.
Sure. Yeah, so just take a little background about what I do and what the field I'm in. So I'm in research administration, more specifically, research development. And Eastern Washington University, two years ago, started investing more in research development. And they hired me. And my job is to go find external funding and do that not only for our faculty and staff and administrators, but also for our community, working in collaboration with community partnerships. In fact, a lot of external funders are expecting collaborative partnerships with their community members. So that's my job is to foster those, those partnerships. So I, that's my job is to foster those, those partnerships, develop ideas, find funding opportunities and much more. I'm also, by the way, I do research on research. So I'm actually working with Gonzaga University and with the university to develop internships to create a pipeline into our field. So we have a grant right now proposed to the National Science Foundation. And so I'm also in general trying to develop more capacity for organizations in our region to, to get, to secure external funding in whatever way that looks like. So for this project, I'm here to help the city of Spokane, help Eastern Washington and whatever, whatever other partners we need in order to secure funding. But I do recognize that as one of our former, our previous meetings we've had with City Spokane staff, that there may not be funding secured for multilingual training and proficiency and workshops and things like that. So I'm here to help facilitate and foster the pursuit of external funding for this project.
Thank you. Want to comment, Ashley? What have you got a minute? What'd you do?
I'm Ashley, I'm the business manager. I'm really here to answer any questions if you guys wanted to like get in the weeds about anything. I'm kind of a process person, a finance person, and so I was just here in case anything kind of technical came up.
Thank you, Ashley. We're not going to the weeds today, but we'll get back with you. Some people like weeds in this room, so go from there. Any other question from council members? Well, thank you, Eastern, for showing up today and sharing what's available and the opportunity for partnerships around grants. It is a priority of the city. Councilwoman McCattcart has been a big champion with me right behind him around this language access that I don't think we're moving as fast as we could. Not even remotely close. That's a quote from Councilwoman McCattcart right there. So, so we'll be hearing from you and really do want to follow up on the internship opportunities because that's something we've talked about a lot, but didn't know quite the avenue to go down to make that happen. So, thank you again. With that, you're happy to stick around? Thank you. We're going to be talking more about language access. We're going to be hearing from our HR and civil service department. So I'm going to, unless Jarrell's online, is he online? All right. So next in, we're going to go to the update on the language access plan from the various departments and that'll be by Jarrell Hayes, our Director of Officer ORCI. I just blanked out, but I got the acronym right, right? So Jarrell? OCR, yes. I got acronyms on the brain. Jarrell?
Hey, hey, Council President. Good morning.
You are up.
Can everyone hear me fine?
Yes.
Hey, hey, good morning, Council President. Good morning, city council members. Natalia, Kristi, great to see you all again. I, I leave every conversation with you all more excited and, and, and more passionate about this work. And, and I hope that after today, we're able to continue our partnership and grow that even more. Each and every interaction with you all has been really, really exciting. I wanted to start with Councilwoman Lambden, I believe that was you to ask the question about data, right?
Yeah.
What, what was that question again? I wanted to be able to address that from our lens as well.
Yeah, really just related to emerging languages in the community and then overall population trends.
Yeah, yeah. Your, your comments about historically language access and getting that type of data and information being really reactive is one of the multitude of challenges that, that we've experienced as we started to take on this language access journey here at the city. And similar to Eastern's comments, right, nailing down that data to be incredibly accurate has been, has been pretty difficult. But having a multitude of partners join in on this work and these conversations has allowed us to start to be able to paint a more clear picture of exactly what the needs are and what, to your point, trending needs could be. One of our partners, biggest partners in that data collection piece has been the school district, right? In Spokane Public Schools, we know that there are over 80 languages spoken within the schools, which means that there's over 80 languages spoken within our community, right? And, and so being able to nail down on, on the multitude of those languages and trying to track down resources in terms of language translation or interpretation services for all of those languages is something that is outlined in our, our language access plan. So speaking of that, right now, from the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion, we've been convening conversations with employees and directors of each of the departments throughout the city. That includes Fire Department, Police Department and all of our other internal departments. We, we now have draft language access plans for all of our departments, but one, the one that's left to finish should be finished by the end of next week so that departments could start working and adjusting those, those language access plans for each individual department. We also have three different martial arts, translation and interpretation services and or businesses within the community. One of them is, is now officially within our vendor pool internally within the city. The other two, we're waiting on their paperwork to be sent back in so that we can make sure that we're able to pay them for any services that they provide around language access to us. We've, we've already done things like taken the, the job postings that civil service and HR send out. We've done the work of, of translating them, getting those reviewed and pushing those out into community in a multitude of different languages. Specifically, the Fire Department's posting is one that's, that's garnering a lot of attention and a lot of positive feedback and hoping communities that I believe we haven't really been able to, to be connected to as, as well as we would like in the past. Specifically, the martial arts community is one of them that's really excited about that job opportunity. And civil service also posted a recruitment for clerks. So clerk positions is also one that we've been able to disseminate out into community in a multitude of different languages. And we're hoping, we're hoping that as a result of that, we'll be able to, to identify whether or not that's had an increase in applicants from diverse backgrounds and life experiences and, and that possess multiple language speaking skills for positions here in the city that could go a really long way. Specifically in my office, that's hoping to hire a clerk, right? We are in the process of interviewing a civil rights coordinator, which a big part of their job is going to be language access work. We were able to, I believe it was 72 applicants total, Kelsey, right? It was something in the neighborhood.
I think that's right.
Yes. Something in the neighborhood of 72 applicants applied for the position, 22 applicants took the civil service testing. And I, and I'm now, I'm now working through the list of 15 that were provided for me through civil service. And we're really excited about that candidate pool. You know, not even meeting with all of them just yet. You know, it's, it's going to be a really tough decision, but we, we have some really high quality candidates that are really interested in doing this work here at the city. And so that's something that we're really, really excited about. Some of our gaps and needs, I think that, that that's why I get so excited talking to Natalia and Kristi is because the, the services that they're positioned to be able to provide us with are exactly where our gaps lie, where they exist, right? As we try to determine a training schedule internally for all of our departments throughout the city, one of the points that Natalia mentioned was that, that each department's job is so drastically different, their language access needs are so drastically different that the, being able to cater the trainings to each and every department and or trying to lump as many of them together that have as much crossover as possible is, is, is really important. And so if we're able to, to fashion out a partnership with, with them, that, that'll go a very long way toward making sure that language access, not only principles, but skills are embedded in every department throughout our city. Obviously, the internships are really exciting. I know city council loves interns. I know the mayor's office administration side loves interns and, and we want to be able to continue to grow and expand our, our intern pool. And, and I mean, we, you know, we have Mateo over in the mayor's office right now and him being, you know, bilingual, it, it's something that I've seen on full display as we've been out in community meeting with multiple immigrant and refugee communities. And, and the way that he's able to, to connect with, with those communities at a higher level in a more, in a more comfortable and efficient way, that, that's such a skill and an asset that we want to be able to, to replicate throughout all of our departments as much as humanly possible. So with that, I'll, I'll open the floor to any questions.
Any questions for Jarrell? Councilmembers upon?
Yeah, thanks for that update, Jarrell. I'm just wondering, what are some specific like benchmarks and timelines that you have set for the rollout of this plan across the city?
Yeah, I think, I think the biggest, the biggest benchmark is budget, right? And, and I know that that's, that's the conversation that, that we're all challenged with right now in the city, right? I just had my own departmental budget meeting with our finance department, right? But it, it's the budget conversation, right? And so how fast can we get departments to, to put the language assets, access plans into practice so that we can get a clear idea of exactly what departments need to be able to budget for moving forward? Is, I think that's the most important next step, if you were to ask me, right? Especially if we're talking about creating sustainability and, and, and long-term planning for this work. And to Councilwoman Lambden's point, right, being able to consistently stay ahead of the curve and not consistently respond to things, it's, it's the budget conversation. You know, again, we, we have those language access dollars right now because, you know, council was, was wise enough to allocate those funds and, and we're utilizing those funds right now. And, and as departments become more comfortable and, and, and we develop more understanding with each department around utilizing those funds, we, we know that we're going, we're going to learn a ton in, in regards to budget, budget development for language access.
Councilwoman Lambden.
And this might be a question for you or it might be for our HR folks, so I might be getting ahead of myself. Has there been work, and this is me being newer to this conversation, to look internally at current staff within the city and taking inventory of their language skills? Because I, I hear you, Jarrell, on the, the budget comment, but I'm wondering if we've looked at our current talent pool and what skills related to language might exist there?
So I, Allison or Kelsey can step in and correct me if I'm wrong here, but from department to department, I don't, I don't know of any like full comprehensive assessment that has been done. We, we know police specifically, they know exactly, you know, who they have and what, and, and the multiple language speakers that they have on staff. And I think they do mainly because they also get paid for it, right? I believe Fire knows, would know the majority of theirs. A lot of our rights, immediate service facing departments and roles probably have a better idea of that, but I, I'm not aware of any official complete assessment. I, I, I'm aware of within the city of Spokane structure of about eight different languages that are spoken amongst, like that employees are able to speak. I just don't know exactly about proficiency levels or anything like that.
Well, I will just say, that's something I would like to see if we could get some of that, even just the languages spoken, I think would be really helpful. And then piggybacking off of that, I think also looking at the, the city funds, a lot of community organizations too. So even outside of folks physically in this building, like what are some of those language skills with some of our community partner organizations who are doing a lot of work with and on behalf of the city? Just to have a really solid inventory of where some of the biggest needs and gaps are.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman McCattcart.
Yeah, a couple of things. Jarrell, you talked about budget and of course, I, I hear you louder than, or as loud as anybody, but at the same time, we have an ordinance that stipulates that we are moving forward with this information. And so I'm hoping and expecting that we are going to get a recommendation to council when it's time to adopt our mid-year budget so that we, the policy body, can determine whether or not that's something that can be funded. And so that's what I'm looking for. Give us the full meal deal and then give us tiers down and let council be the, the arbiter of what we can afford and what we can't.
And so Jarrell, Council, Council President here. A couple of things. My concern is about language access is we have folks who walk through the front door of our house and we have no one to assist them with language interpretation. I think development services might be a little better, but I don't know how much. So I know we have been working with some IT AI programming for translation services. Is that part of the language access plan? And my last one that has been really bothering me is we do not have sign language. And I find that to be, would be critical in emergency situations. That, that's not even available. If anybody's even looked at any type of contract around that type of service for the city, I mean, big fire, windstorm, ice storm, I don't know. Who would do that? So those are my other things. And then, because I got a list.
Yeah, I'm writing them down so I can address all of them.
You can black out the department's name, but I would like to see what one of those plans look like from one of those departments of what their language access plan is. What does that look like? Were they given some type of template to work from or were they all shooting from the hip and developing something from the ground? So if it's all over the place, that will make it more difficult for us to look at the funding piece.
Definitely.
Does the need would be so varied in that? So, I'll stop right there. I'll email you the rest.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So, so, so the first point around people being able to walk into city hall and have their language access needs met, I, I agree. We, we need to do, we need to be able to put up signage within the lobby of city hall and any of public, publicly accessible spaces in city hall that provide resources in the multitude of different languages or at least direction in a multitude of different languages. It is my belief and understanding that 311 is in contract with a language translating service. And so members that approach the, the customer service desk downstairs would be able to get connected to translators in, in almost any language, I believe. But we could do a better job of making sure that that is known and that there's signage that helps direct people to the proper connections within city hall to have those needs met. I agree with you a thousand percent on, 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 on all of your points. Then your, your point about American Sign Language is, is also very valid and that was a gap that we realized during the process of this work. So each of the plans have American Sign Language within, embedded within the plans. And our communications director, Aaron Hutt, was, was actually the person who highlighted that gap several months ago so that we, we're making sure that, that that is a part of, of important communications moving forward as well. And, and yes, to your point, there, there are departments who started developing language access plans further ahead of the process, right? Which is great, right? City planning is one of those departments that comes to mind. Fire is one of those departments that comes to mind, right? And, and so their plans were consulted in, in relation to building the draft plans for all of the other departments. So there will be consistency amongst plans as much as makes sense, but each individual department does have some pretty specific things for their individual departments. And I, and I can get draft plans sent over to all of council if that's what you like.
Thank you. Councilman McCattcart.
Yeah, I, I had a couple of things. And, and on the, this note right now, I mean, the, the ordinance does mandate that we have a model language access plan. And so if you've developed that.
We have that too. Yeah, I sent it to you too.
That'd be helpful. Thank you. Also, in terms of just the internal looking consideration, you commented that, you know, police get paid. Well, the ordinance we passed also allows for an ad to pay for folks who do have language access skills.
we passed also allows for an ad to pay for folks who do have language access skills, um well, proficiencies, which shouldn't just be skills, but proficiencies. And so I I don't think that the the idea that just because the police are getting paid is a factor in that. If if that is the issue, I mean, we should be able to look at every department since we've authorized that ad to pay. So I don't think it's a pay issue. Um also
I apologize. I wasn't I wasn't highlighting it as an issue. I was I was saying that that they were more aware of it and had that information on paper.
Sure.
Because that is present. It's what I
Yep. No, I I understand. And then uh in terms of when folks come in, I totally agree. I mean, I think we either need to have somebody there who is professionally proficient and can translate, or and frankly, my preference for cost is that we um are adapting to our our phase two or three, whatever we're calling it, with the kiosks. And we set that up in the lobby and maybe right there at the 311 desk, and people can interact right there. That's our plan with council going forward, you know, sometime in the future as well. And so to me, that would be a frankly, a cost-effective, uh quicker solution. Um but if we have somebody obviously who's proficient, that would be the most ideal. And and then also, I was just going to add, um uh there was a comment Shelby made, uh councilmember Lyndon made about uh outside groups. And I just want to be
Yes, sir.
very, very cautious. In fact, the reason I have been, one of the main reasons I have been such a champion of this issue internally is because I think trust is a huge factor. And I
Agree.
want people to avoid needing to go to a third party to understand the facts of what we're doing
Yes, sir.
that might get manipulated in that translation and in that process. It might get filtered. Certain things might not make it all the way through. Um
Yeah.
That to me is a huge concern. And I think frankly, that happens today. I hear from folks every once in a while, oh, I was told this, but that is not true. And so but they're relying on a third party giving them that information. And so my my intent is, be it council action, be it a utility bill, be it a a mayor's executive order, uh planning uh uh document, whatever it is, that they are getting the straight facts, a hundred percent accurate to the word, professionally proficient.
Yeah.
That's my intention in this, because every single individual in our community deserves full one hundred percent accurate access to the information. And I do not want to see them pushed to a third party where we can verify that they're actually getting those straight facts.
So that
You're specifically referring to translators and interpreters.
Translators, interpreters, correct, yeah.
Okay.
And and that um just to loop Eastern, that would be a place where um the testing could happen. That level of proficiency, Councilmember McCatt Card, they only speak it, they write the language as well.
And if I could just clarify too, I I wasn't suggesting that information passed through the third party, rather leveraging that skill set within those community organizations, knowing that a lot of our multilingual community members happen to participate with a lot of those groups. So having that shared messaging coming directly from the city and leveraging those partnerships that already exist. Um and another question I had, and again, this is just me being newer to the conversation, is there any sort of roadmap for this work that currently exists? I know Councilmembers upon asked about benchmarks and timelines, but I'm thinking about some of those lower hanging areas such as having signage that's translated. If if that's something that exists in any sort of roadmap to really have um a clear pathway forward, just knowing that this is a really big undertaking. Uh so having some of those like really measurable goals and milestones, I think might be helpful for some of this work.
Uh yes, so so that's a that's a great question. As of right now, some of the more specific tasks like that do not exist on a on a in a milestone format just yet. That is that'll be part of the work that the internal work group uh tackles. Um it it's the it's the larger benchmarks that we've really been tracking um that the ordinance lays out uh to try to meet those milestones as much as humanly possible. And uh but I I we're we're at a point now to to your point where a lot of those uh smaller uh what seem to be easier tasks uh can start to be tackled pretty pretty rapidly.
Councilmember McCatt Card, and then Councilmembers upon.
Yeah, and then just in terms of of rapidly trying to move forward, obviously, and it was referenced earlier, we've built this really incredible tool
Yes, sir.
that, you know, with a high degree of accuracy. It's not perfect today, but the goal is eventually through um, you know, AI and and machine learning, we can get it to be as as close to that as possible. But with that tool, you know, I've not seen a ton of it being at least publicly outwardly used. And I think that that's a low-hanging fruit opportunity to really start emphasizing the use of that tool and pushing some of that information out. Um and hopefully, just in terms of those language access plans, that might be kind of a a first step is to really start to utilize the tool that's
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, as great, great point. As we as we continue to have conversations with each individual department, it's it's that learning curve that all departments need it to have, right? Those the conversations. So what we realized were departments were interested in using it, but they didn't know that they weren't getting charged specifically as an individual department, right? Like, the charge goes to their department for tracking purposes, but it it's it's the language access, it's the upper dollars that's actually being allocated to fill that, right? And so as more employees uh have learned that, uh we hope that that can that grows the use of it. I think the biggest win in terms of utilizing that tool that we've had so far has uh been the Zine, right? Um that that was able to be disseminated out into community in a multitude of different languages. But yeah, I I agree. Great point.
Councilmembers upon.
Yeah, so just to clarify on the like language line, I guess that 311 has access to. Do other departments have access to that right now? Can even city council use that language line to contact people? And do they know that's possible? And then two is for that kind of quicker translation services stuff, I know that like the Spokane Transit website has a language option on the website that translates the entire website, not PDF,
Yes, sir.
which we've talked about. But there's a lot of resources on our website that could be instantly translated with that dropdown. Has that been explored?
That's the expensive next phase of the website.
But is that
Yeah.
like I think Spokane Transit just uses Google Translate.
Right.
Well, I and I think I think our website has has the option to, I believe.
I don't think our website has any option for that.
I'll I'll double check it, but we just ran into this when we released the the uh immigrant refugees webpage. There were people wondering about the webpage being translated into every language. We had resources translated, but people were wondering if the entire webpage could be translated. And uh I believe web team was able to walk a couple of people through how they how they could do it. Um now, again, to to Councilmember Kat Card's point, with the with the development of the new website, those translation tools are going to be far and above and beyond uh just the traditional Google Translate, is my understanding.
I just have one more, then we'll be ready to move on. So is each department then having to include their language access planning in their budget? Has that been a barrier? Because it's going to cost them. That's why they're dragging their feet. You can get back to me on that one, because I'm concerned about that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then secondly, on the timeline, I think you're probably hearing that's pretty important, because we've been on this journey. We're in year two, two and a half?
Two.
Uh the resolution was in twenty-two.
Was in twenty-two.
Three going on year four.
Going on year four. So even if we, somebody could give us a timeline when signs will be posted as a low-hanging fruit, um that will be out.
I would really like to see more fleshed out like benchmark plan. I think that would be really helpful. And also for funding side, we would, I would be interested in seeing actual plan around it and not just ideas of dollars, but like benchmarks rollout plan.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmembers upon. All right. Well, thank you, Jorrell. I'm sure you'll be hearing from us again.
Yes, ma'am.
We we appreciate you being here and asking, answering our questions. As you can see, this is a pretty important topic with council. With that, we're going to move on. Uh we're going to hear from Kelsey and Allison about proficiency verification, which you all might be interested in from Eastern as well, and the status of our priority or scoring for a multilingual applicant. So which one of you want to take it out?
Well, Kelsey.
Well, I'll start.
Yeah.
Because we definitely will be doing, um as many are aware, state legislator passed some new um new language last year regarding uh preference points for civil service exams for bilingual and multilingual speakers. Um we do have a process here. So we had to go to our rule convene rule review committee, which is made up of six members of management, six members of the bargaining units. We discussed, we voted, we created some language. Um that was adopted by the Civil Service Commission um about three months ago. And we're now working through the process of um sort of interviewing and coming up with who what are our options for for proficiency testing. Um I'm thrilled to hear there's testing available at Eastern. We have certainly been speaking with sort of private businesses. A lot of people have come to us because they they know the ordinance has passed um that are not fitting the needs uh that we need, which is I'm really not interested in um sort of a five thousand mile away online written exam only. We really are looking for oral fluency as well. Um and obviously, funding is a concern for us. I mean, civil service as a department does not have the funds currently to support this, but um we have been working with the mayor's office to try to come up with some dollars. And we also, this is very brand new for us, so trying to pinpoint how many people we're going to, you know, how many candidates we're going to get um is sort of, we're just kind of throwing, you know, darts in the night at this point. Um we do really want to work very collaboratively with HR because there are going to be, there's already lots of questions of preference points on an exam really is just that. It gives you a leg up on a on an eligible list. The after hire is a whole different sort of set of questions. I think there's an expectation for many um bilingual and multilingual speakers that there's my skills will be used upon hire. And um that's a whole other topic of conversation that is really sort of HR's. I mean, we're going to want FAQs and sort of be able be able to walk people through our processes, which are weird, frankly. And um, you know, and and sort of that expectation on the other end is what happens once I'm hired and I'm a and I'm a multilingual bilingual speaker? Is it like at the police department where I get, right? I'm I take a proficiency exam, I get an ad to pay. We know there's ad to pay language in the ordinance. And I'm I can't speak to sort of bargaining since I don't do that, but I think that there is, you know, even your notion of like, do we have a database of current employees and what languages are already being spoken in this agency? No, we don't. We don't. I mean, I think we all sort of know a person in a particular department that could get by, but we don't really have that. And if we were to create that, what does that mean? Does that mean those folks can leave their regularly scheduled duties and come to another department and assist? Are we compensating them for those things? Those are the questions that we get asked in civil service, and it's sort of not in our wheelhouse. Um we're sort of the pope, the pre-hire spot. But there are always going to be questions that candidates are going to be asking of, will my skills get used? Is this job a job that I'm going to need, you know, on a Spanish speaker? Do I get to speak Spanish? Because if I'm only going to get hired to be a refuse collector and I'm in a truck all day by myself, and I might talk to maybe three or four citizens during the day, maybe that I thought I was going to get to use my multilingual, you know, language skills all day.
But why would we be prioritizing language for that job, right? I'm just, I know you're using it as an example.
Right.
But obviously, we're a pretty smart organization, and we realize utility billing, police, plant, there's areas where we absolutely fundamentally need these and areas where
Absolutely. I agree. And and I agree, and there was much discussion during the review.
Yes.
Much discussion over, do we do we only offer the preference for targeted positions? Do we only offer certain languages?
Certainly, it wouldn't make sense for an ad to pay for a job where you're not going to use that skill.
I I agree with you on that. For the purposes of the preference and getting a leg up on the list, the decision was made by rule review that it would apply universally for all positions. And um that I
Out of our purview, Councilmember McCatt Card.
Much discussion about it, yes. Um but that that what, you know, that would be a post-hire thing of, is this necessary? Is this, I I mean, the purpose that state legislator did was the incentive for this was to increase diversity for public safety positions. And that was really the the point of it. Um we're not sure if it will be helpful or not. I mean, I I'm hopeful that it is. I don't think there's, I don't think there's a downside to having people that speak multiple languages, even in places where perhaps it's not as needed. But I do think that HR will need to work with management departments on where are our pain points? And, you know, how do we target, especially when we go out and do recruiting? If we're going to be recruiting for a specific, let's say, customer service assistants or customer service specialists that work in 311, that maybe that we're really pushing our advertising and our those, you know, limited resource dollars into areas where we know, hey, we really should be pushing that we love. This could be a position where you really are going to want um, you know, people who speak all the other languages for sure, because it's needed every single day.
Right.
Yeah. And do you guys have any questions on sort of the the civil service piece?
No, I'll get to Allison, then I'll be questioning who who will be monitoring these people when they get here? Um is that once a year or once every five years? There's some type of test to see if they still have their proficiency level adequately, so.
And I think that's um, it's kind of a stepped process, right? First, we kind of have to go through the process of what does the civil service process look like for getting individuals in the door. Now, do we all, I I will tell you, I know someone in the city that is fluent in French and Flemish. Do I think French and Flemish are needed in our community? I haven't heard it being a top priority, right? So part of it is not only departments that need it, but are there languages? What what are the true needs of the community? Um not trying to be reactive, but just knowing that when we're talking about things like ads to pay, when we're bargaining those types of decisions and thoughts with the bargaining units, um how how do we come about that process? Um and if if what I have is a department of fifteen and all fifteen are bilingual, but they're all fifteen bilingual in Spanish, you know, how useful is that, right? So some of it is, I mean, the more people, um now I'm losing um the language that we had spoken about during the civil service process, um very hard for us to find, right? And the police department knows like, we really want more of these individuals on our teams, and we wish we could find more people. So there's there's certain pockets of the community where we have even more need than others. Um and so I think that's part of the bigger conversation is like, how do we balance that out so that we're so that we're providing services to those that we're connecting with, so that they can connect with the city, but doing it in a responsible way where where we kind of have that balance.
And to your point, in a department, say you have fifteen, just happen to have fifteen uh individuals that speak the same language, um would it not make sense then that you would create a position or positions that would you be hiring or, you know, moving somebody into specifically for that skill? So that, you know, of those fifteen, perhaps three of them are, you know, put into this clerk one multilingual position. And that's that's capped, right? You have three positions, because that's what you need, perhaps.
Yeah, and I think
You would hire for that, and the three that make it make?
Yeah, and I think that's where that bigger conversation, because if if we, when we talk about what we have as jobs job specs and how we're hiring into it, and then what the departments need. And then if those department needs change, right, as our community changes, our department needs change. Um and so, yeah, I think it, but that's the bigger, that's the bigger picture of as we're putting these plans into place and as we're talking about what we need in in departments and trying to then get to the point where we can go to bargaining. If I remember correctly, um police are doing ad to pay for five different languages right now. There's an eligibility for five different languages. If you think about how the police department, it's twenty-four seven, spread throughout the city, you need a lot of different people with a lot of different languages. Are you always going to have the right person there available at the time that you have an incident for what you need? Um those are some of the other bigger questions where coming, like Kelsey's heard from people, like, does that mean I get to go just be translating? Um I don't know that we want to hire just translators. Um maybe we decide that is the path for it. I don't know. But I think that there's some of those bigger strategic, how do we make this work well? So we're not just saying that we're doing it, but we're able to do it well, and we're actually reaching the community um and the departments that we have serving them.
Any other questions from councilmembers? So
Council president.
I'm sorry.
Just real quick, um not really a question, more of a comment for consideration and building some of that out. Um I think another metric that would be really helpful to look at too is it's great to bring these people into the city, but what do the retention rates look like for those staff members specifically?
Well, and I will say, even if they use it to get it to improve their civil service, there's a lot of people that don't want to use those skills once they're here. there's a lot of people that don't want to use those skills once they're here. So if I were to do an internal ask, I would have to make it kind of a two-step ask. Can you speak more than one language? Are you willing to speak more than one language? And to EWU's, some of that ongoing conversation, I came most recently from healthcare where, you know, we had, and we did typically use the translation services that were available to us by phone and stuff, you can call in and use those services. But there's very specific things that are needed in healthcare that is far outside of what I would normally need when I'm doing an employee benefits meeting and I'm trying to tell eight different languages about the benefits that we provide, right? So I think what we find in those types of situations is most often people don't necessarily want to speak up and say that they can do it. But when you're sitting in those meetings and the whole back row is talking to each other, you know, they're just telling each other what I just said. So we're fine, they're listening and they're communicating with each other. So there's a little bit of that that happens as well from a cultural perspective.
Makes sense.
So I'll just go to the last part. What are training opportunities? What's going on with training opportunities? Whether it's in the bilingual, multilingual area, cultural area, is the city looking at any trainings that could be supportive and maybe we hire these people? What are additional supports? Or for ones who want to be actually cross-trained in this type, in this space?
Yeah, so I, to my knowledge, Jarell, I'll let you step in because perhaps there's a process in the overall plan. I'm not aware of any offerings that we provide currently. I'm very interested in the cultural awareness workshops because I think all of our employees can use that. From an HR perspective, let me just say, the more cultural awareness everyone can have, the better we all are. And so I think from that perspective, there's some offerings out there that we can look at. The city, you know, again, it gets back to budget and I know this because I'm an HR department, I've never brought revenue into an organization before. I'm always asking for it, right? And so it's a struggle for all kinds of organizations. And so I think we do have to have that plan around how do we address that. But Jarell, did you have something specific within what your plans are and what you've addressed and looked at?
Yeah, so we're actually attempting to develop an annual training calendar where we are able to provide training opportunities for employees. And this is a conversation that in our last discussion with Natalia and Kristi, we discussed the possibilities of partnering around training offerings, what we would maybe provide a once a quarter or once every other month, a training opportunity for staff members internally.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, I'll just share, Allison, you weren't here, but council has had several trainings around cultural competency, diversity. Alex, I've been talking about some other ones that we're looking at bringing in the first of next year. It's been really important to council that we feel that we are trained because we have that direct connection with our community and really want to understand when we're making policy, are we understanding what we're really doing? So we have been on that track. So I'm glad to hear that administration is now willing to really commit to that going forward. All right, is there anything else that needs to come before us? Again, thank you, Eastern, for joining us this morning. Now that you've heard some of our issues, go back, troubleshoot them and get back with them. How you can help us navigate the spaces that we're in. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.